Madam Clerk, if you would.
Yes. I'm the 708. Trustee Porter?
Here.
Trustee Conko? Trustee Van Colly?
Here.
Trustee Broccalino?
Here.
Trustee Albar?
Here.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Please join me in the.
Ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, we are in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Should accept the adjut- So. Motion to second to accept the adjut- Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Uh, any cha- You're gonna say any changes?
Pardon me?
Please, are you gonna ask any changes?
Yes, you have a lot.
Okay, so we're moving eight A seven from consent agenda.
Eighty seven?
Yes.
Pull that off consent.
And Mayor, there will be a close executive session?
There will be a what?
An executive session at the end of the meeting.
Yes, we will have an executive session. Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
For acceptance. Trustee Conko?
Yes.
Trustee Van Colly?
Yes.
Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
Trustee Albar?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
And Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Castings.
Public hearing. Motion.
All right, public hearing, public hearing until Senator January first, twenty twenty-six through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Annual budgets. You'll want to accept public hearing until Senator twenty-six.
Open.
Twenty-six annual budget.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. We call the roll, please.
Trustee Van Colly?
Yes.
Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
Trustee Albar?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
And Trustee Conko?
Very good. See our public officer is ready and summary of Senator twenty-six annual budget provided by the Budget Office. Thank you, really.
Good evening. I'm pleased to present a summary of twenty-two-six annual budget for consideration and passes this evening, December fourth, twenty twenty-five. The public noticed that call for this hearing was published in the Daily Herald on November twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. The recommended budget for twenty-twenty-six total ninety-five million, seven-hundred-twenty-thousand, five-hundred-twenty-five in revenues and one-hundred-million, eight-hundred-sixty-seven-thousand, seven-hundred in expenditures for all funds. The general fund, the village's main operating fund, is budgeted to receive fifty-million, eight-hundred-forty-five-thousand, six-hundred-ninety-two in revenues and fifty-million, five-hundred-eighty-thousand, seven-hundred-thirty-five in expenditures, with a projected surplus of two-hundred-sixty-four-thousand, nine-hundred-fifty-seven for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, which will be added back to the fund balance. Highlight for the twenty-twenty-six budget are as follows. The general fund and assigned fund balance remain within the village's fund balance policy and goals. The current level of services is maintained. Continuation of scheduling funding for the village's pension fund in accordance with the actuarial recommendation. Continuation of funds for the IT equipment replacement fund to account for the future replacement cost of the village's information technology. And the, uh, and of the central equipment fund to account for the village's vehicle scheduled to be replaced. The twenty-twenty-six budget anticipated a zero percent property tax increase in the corporate and debt service levy. This is our tenth year that the village has not increased the overall levy of the corporate and debt service levy. Increase of the water and sewer rate four-point-five percent per year for the next two years, along with that increase to the infrastructure service charges of eight percent, eight percent per year for the next two years. It will take effect effective January first, twenty twenty-six. This increase is necessary to fund the replacement of our aging water infrastructure lines, which are ready, which are already exceeding their useful life of fifty years. Capital spending plan a total of over three-point-one million in allocated for street resurfacing and reconstruction project. Also included is six-point-one million in additional improvement and replacement to the village's water and sewer infrastructure, including the electrical upgrade of the street road pump station and the new water interconnect with Bartlett. The village's continue to operate in a sound financial condition. This conclude the stop presentation portion of this evening hearing. Any question will be available to answer.
No questions? Any questions on the board?
Thank you very much. Did a good job, thanks, Ronnie.
Very good. Any persons that desire to be heard with opportunity to present testimony, examine witnesses?
Concerning the budget.
Concerning the budget, yeah. Hearing done. Uh, motion to close the public hearing. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
Trustee Albar?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Conko?
Yes.
Trustee Van Colly?
Yes.
Motion to carry.
Thank you. I see no presentations this evening. Town hall session, I have.
A couple people here. We have seventy-one persons.
Yes, for the Wagner's like to come up and speak on.
Your microphone's over on this side.
Going on with the bridge that was supposed to be done two weeks ago on Arlington going into our sub. Snow plows, plowing along Arlington by the junior high, because cars have, it's terrible and now it's even worse and the bridge isn't open yet and today they weren't working, yesterday they worked about four hours. And we know they kept telling us they had to wait for AT&amp;T to move lines, but it's been on and on and now the lines are moved, but the bridge.
Supposed to be done mid-November, or in the mid-December.
Getting close to, we're just wondering how much longer.
I could make a request to engineering, give us a update, Jonathan?
Yes. Sat on, there you are. Yes, uh, so there was on track to be opened around Thanksgiving and then AT&amp;T, uh, did not move their equipment as anticipated and we had to wait another two to three weeks for them to move their equipment in November, so therefore we could not do our work in November. Um, so because of AT&amp;T, we lost three weeks in November and those were critical in terms of our timeline. Um, right now we're doing, um, they're doing as much work as they can with the weather, but with the snow and the cold temperatures, they're limited to how much work they can do out there.
Okay, well, we were hearing, we were he-
The cold weather doesn't have anything to do with that.
We were hearing all, all summer long, AT&amp;T, they're waiting on AT&amp;T and it, we just don't understand why AT&amp;T, somebody wasn't on AT&amp;T to do this stuff. That's why they started late in May, because they were waiting for AT&amp;T. Every time we turn around, it's, they're waiting on AT&amp;T and.
That, that is not false, yes, we have been waiting on T-
Yeah, but I don't understand why nobody wasn't on AT&amp;T to move that box.
We were, we were, they said they would have it moved by the end of October and then when it came time at the end of October, it still was not moved and, um, we continued to be on them and continued to work with them, tried to get somebody out there and they were not, um, very responsive to our efforts.
Now it's all moved, right?
Now it is finally moved.
Now we gotta get the guys to work. When they don't show up, or if they start at eight o'clock in the morning and they're gone by two, the job ain't gonna get done.
It, it, it's not, right now, it's not amount of how much work can get done in a day, it's just simply the weather is preventing us from.
But maybe they should have planned this a little early in the year, so you don't run in the wintertime. But they pour concrete all year long. I mean, I, I worked in the trades thirty-seven years, we were outside every winter. But when you only work four or five hours a day, it ain't gonna get done. There's a pile of rebar out there that's been sitting there for months.
And it's not just us that's talking and complaining about it. We've talked to all of our neighbors. It's just terrible that it's been dragged the way it has and.
When that middle school lets out in the afternoon, somebody's gonna get hurt over there, one of, because these kids start out in the middle of the street, you got buses coming through there, cars parked on both sides, and now you got some cars that didn't move for the plows, so that even makes it worse.
John, is it still gonna be possible for the, the bridge to open with the gravel base?
Not likely, so we're.
No, they're still holding, Ronnie, can't jump over.
We, we are, we have been doing everything in our power to get it done and open. It, it is a huge priority for our department, um, and the village as a whole. Um, we invest, have invested serious effort.
Do you understand it's not you guys, it's just somebody's dragging their feet and it's at our expense who lives in that part of the, the village and we're stuck in one spot and to handle how it's certain hours, it's just.
Or you go by the job site, you see a couple laborers out there, but none of the operators are in the machines. Not gonna get nothing done when all those machines move.
Okay, if I may, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate the feedback. Okay. Um, next is.
Mary Palacio?
Did I miss somebody?
Mary Palacio? Sorry, before we, before we get to that, Mayor, John, do we, so just given the additional information, do we have an updated timeframe?
It is very weather dependent, so assuming we, we had been hopeful that the asphalt plants would stay open, because we have to be able to pave it, so we have to get asphalt. Um, asphalt plants close during the winter because temperatures aren't warm enough and then there's not enough work for them to do, even if it does get warm, so we may be waiting until the asphalt plants open in the spring.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mary, about parking on Sutter?
Hello.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Um, yes, I, my concern is parking. Um, they had odd and even parking on Sutter and on other places, um, near there and the thing is now they changed it. So across the street, there's no parking anytime, which I like because you can get emergency vehicles in a lot easier where before, literally fire trucks were backing up, they couldn't get through because there was two big vehicles on both sides. The problem now, though, is that they had, where there was no parking, um, on my side of the street, um, I'm even side, um, overnight unless you had like four times, uh, a month with permission from the village. That changed to now them saying, well, let's make it, I think, just odd parking on that side, but the problem is this, you have people who literally park the whole way up, okay? And then the thing is this, when I need to bring my groceries in, I have no access from my garage, I have to use the front door. They block the whole front door, sometimes either I put my blinkers on in the middle of the street, blinkers on on the other side where I'm not supposed to park, that's one problem. Another problem is, what happens when I have guests? Where do they park? They can't park on this side, because there's no parking anytime. Then over here, unless it's a day where nobody's parking, where do my guests go? Laid a shell, I mean, it's a huge problem. And now with the plowing, it's really bad. The snow, I mean, you had everybody parking here and now they weren't getting it until this ordinance gets passed, so you had cars the whole way up, the plow, plowed on, you know, this side did a great job, but they have all the snow being pushed over here, then it goes back up, people are cleaning their cars, back up onto the sidewalk. It's, it's a no-win situation for the people who live there, especially like I'm saying, the people in the front units, because you have no access to your garage. And I don't know why it's not being addressed with the fire department, because it's gotta be a hazard. Some of these people never use their garage, you cannot even walk in there. And HOAs are supposed to have ordinances, regulations where you need to put a motorized vehicle in your garage. I don't know why that's not, nothing's being addressed with that. Why aren't HOAs somehow through the village being, you know, penalized or whatever? I don't know.
I think we control the HOAs, unfortunately.
Yeah, too bad.
Chief, chief just provided an update on parking. Was there any, did this come into play, too?
Good evening, yeah, I hear, I hear your concerns, I feel them too. Um, we've struggled a lot with this as far as trying to figure out the best balance for, you know, safety and convenience. Um, when we made our initial revisions to your subdivision and, and one other, we feel like we went a little bit too far in terms of restricting the overnight. So on Apache, Bear Flag, Nugget and Sutter, the board will, uh, have an opportunity to vote tonight on a revision that adds eighty-two additional, approximately eighty-two, well, extra overnight spots on those four streets that I just mentioned that hopefully will alleviate this to a certain degree, but really solving that challenge of having one side of the roadway open so for access, because with cars on both sides of the street all the time, like we were experiencing the plow issues, the emergency vehicles, it just really wasn't workable. So I, I appreciate you mentioning the association stuff, I, I, it's a frustration, you know, for us too, and I know for everybody living there, but I think tonight's, uh, update will alleviate at least somewhat at night.
So curiosity question, are you still gonna be able to park on Sutter, like odd and even days? Because then it's not gonna help with anything, because these cars, I mean, literally, if you go by there, there's cars the whole way down. Where do I park?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna, it's, we had, we had to restrict it a, as far as the, the closeness to the intersections a little bit, people are parking too close to the intersections. Um, on Sutter, uh, the additional spots are gonna be for odd days.
Oh, good, okay, at least you're gonna be, okay, awesome. Thank you very much, thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for showing up tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
On this call. All right, thank you. Uh, Tom, oh, that's Tom. Uh, village president's report? I didn't really prepare anything tonight. I'm looking forward to, uh, our call session that we'll have, uh, for personnel and that'll be added to the agenda, as it has. Uh, with that, I'd like to approve by on this vote items on the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
And those are items eight A one through eight A six and eight A eight and eight, no, 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 just eight A six. Eight A one through eight A six.
Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Albar?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Conko?
Yes.
Trustee Van Colly?
Yes.
Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Eighty-seven, move to pass an ordinance prohibiting use of village property for federal civil immigration enforcement activities. So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Discussion?
Yeah. So I again wanted to thank our board and our staff for all the time that was put into creating this ordinance. And, you know, I just wanted to state for the record that when I initially proposed this ordinance, I did it in direct response to the dehumanizing and shameful ICE raids and tactics and operations that were happening in and around our community. And I just, I truly believe that when the, the federal government falters, it is up to state and local governments to, to step up to the plate. And so I'm, I'm, I'm grateful for, to our board, I truly believe that there is power in the pen and I'm really grateful that tonight we are reaffirming our commitment to immigrant families, to our employees, to our PD, um, and that we, we're, we're really just, um, again reaffirming our, our, our values that are rooted in being a welcoming family. And so I thank the board and I thank our staff.
Well, thank you. Any other comments? I do appreciate, oh, hurry.
Yes, I, I just wanna echo, um, those sentiments, uh, by Trustee Van Colly. Uh, I, I think it's important that, uh, when it's all said and done, that we find ourselves on the right side of history, uh, with this particular, uh, this particular, uh, thing that's going on in our nation and in our state. And, uh, I'm very proud as well of the effort, uh, and very thankful of the effort that the village attorney and staff put in drafting, uh, this ordinance that's met the approval of the board, uh, and very encouraged that we're moving forward with this.
And I wanna thank everyone for pitching in. What I brought forward, I thought was right on the mark, but, uh, we had some, some dialogue and then we revisited in a workshop and we all, we came to a consensus among us and I was really pleased with the outcome. So I wanna thank everybody for their diligence and working through those issues. So with that, Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Conko?
Yes.
Trustee Van Colly?
Yes.
Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
And Trustee Albar?
Emphatically, yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Yeah, you should feel good about bringing that together, thank you. Uh, eight A eight, motion to pass an ordinance adopting fiscal year twenty-six budget and move passage of an appropriation ordinance. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trustee Albar?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Conko?
Yes.
Trustee Van Colly?
Yes.
And Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Eighty-nine, move an ordinance authorizing a levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-six and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six in the village Hanover Park Special Service Area Number Three, Astor Avenue. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, any discussion? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Conko?
Yes.
Trustee Van Colly?
Yes.
Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
And Trustee Albar?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Eighty-ten, move to pass an ordinance authorizing a levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-six and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six in N four, the village Hanover Park Special Service Number Four, Hanover Park. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Conko?
Yes.
Trustee Van Colly?
Yes.
Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
And Trustee Albar?
Yes.
And Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. Eighty-eleven, move to pass an ordinance authorizing a levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-six and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six in N four, the village Hanover Park Special Service Area Number Five, Green Brook, Tankwood area. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Conko?
Yes.
Trustee Van Colly?
Yes.
Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
Trustee Albar?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yeah.
And Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Motion to pass an ordinance authorizing a levy and assessment of taxes for the corporate and municipal purposes in the village Hanover Park, a home rule municipality, Cook and Page Counties, Illinois, for fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-six and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Van Colly?
Yes.
Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
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 Trustee Porter?
Yes.
And Trustee Conko?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Eighty-thirteen, move to approve warrant called for twenty-twenty-five in the amount of one million, eight-hundred-forty-nine-thousand, four-hundred-eighteen dollars and thirty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
Trustee Albar?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Conko?
Yes.
And Trustee Van Colly?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Fourteen, move to approve warrant paid in advance, eleven fourteen, twenty twenty-five through eleven twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of seven-hundred-forty-eight-thousand, three-hundred-forty-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Albar?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Conko?
Yes.
Trustee Van Colly?
Yes.
Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Eighty-fifteen, move to approve, October twenty-fifth, October twenty-twenty-five, Peacock, in the amount of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and, six hundred dollars and eighty-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Conko?
Yes.
Trustee Van Colly?
Yes.
Trustee Broccalino?
Yes.
And Trustee Albar?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, personal, which I forgot to mention during my report, and I'll do that now, I'd just like to share that, uh, former trustee Rick Roberts is, uh, sadly with his, uh, with his liver and, uh, I'm assisting him with the, uh, association, his family, others, to find him some relief. Apparently he can no longer, uh, take care of himself by himself. So I had the opportunity to talk with Syed, you know, he, he spoke with the family and, uh, it's just, uh, he lost his job in January and he's been struggling. He's, uh, just sixty-two and can't qualify for some things, you know, social security or whatever, I, you know, those things, I qualified forever ago, um, but, uh, yeah, Rick's in, uh, not good, not good news for, for your friend, so. I forget how long he was trustee, but.
Eight years.
Twelve years?
Eight.
Eight years? It seemed like twelve. Anyway, I wanted to share that and, uh, I think you all know I'll be, uh, having some outpatient and I'll be, uh, locked down at home for about a week, uh, from the eleventh to the eighteenth. I keep trying to find ways to wiggle out of all that, but, uh, who knows? Sherry's got me under, under a, so, uh, number nine, village manager's report, Deanna?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, village clerk's report?
Yeah, it's on behalf of village clerk Merrill. Um, would like to welcome everyone to join us to celebrate the tree lighting event tomorrow uh, from five-thirty to seven-thirty at the Ontarioville Plaza located at nineteen-hundred Ontarioville Road. We hope to see everybody there.
And the reindeer?
Are bad.
The reindeer are bad?
Yeah.
It's quite an event. We, uh, put a lot of work into that. Public Works knocked themselves out. Thank you very much. Please pass it along. Relocating all that snow and God knows what else falls from the sky. And I'll see you all out there, hopefully. It's, uh, quite a nice event for our municipality. Okay, uh, corporation council report?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, village trustees' report, Trustee Porter?
Um, very briefly, uh, just want to congratulate the staff for reducing the budget and for the ten-year old company, we've a lot of facilities, not rest, there's no increase in our maintenance contracts, uh, with what's going on in our economy and what's going on in the world around us, that's an incredible feat. It's not taken lightly, uh, and we certainly appreciate all the hard work, uh, and the hard work, the waste and the hazards. Congratulations to, uh, private, the staff, the work of Sutter, our department, and, uh, above and beyond. And, uh, certainly I appreciate, uh, those of us who sit on the beds. And, uh, one final thing that I would like to say is, good, better, best, never let it rest. And you, it's better, you're better, it's best.
First game in Green Bay. I gotta find a shirt that's bear-chested.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you, thank you, Herb. I could have said it better. Trustee Conko.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Veterans Committee meeting that was scheduled for Saturday is canceled. Uh, I know a lot, a lot of you's heard, uh, that it was. It was, it's due to a comm ed transformer, uh, replacement that's in the village that's going to be, uh, taking all day on Saturday. I was, uh, involved with the mayor and my wife doing the basket brigade. And, uh, we gave, uh, thirteen meals altogether with me and my wife and me and the mayor. And I want to thank Public Works for their great job in doing the snow removal. And if you're going to the tree ceremony, tree lighting ceremony, dress warm, please. It's gonna be cold. That's all.
Hand heaters in the booths. I hear that works well.
Yep.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Van Col.
Sorry.
You forgot your name.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, sorry. Um, thank you. I wanted to, um, welcome back Officer Behovert, who is, um, back on our force. Um, we're so grateful that he's come back. And I wanted to, again, uh, thank our chief, Chief Johnson, Chief DeVito, our village manager, for overseeing that process, um, with such professionalism, with such care, with such empathy. So I, I, I wanted to make that note, so thank you. We have, uh, several of us know this, but I want to state this again. We have a brand-new Greek restaurant in town. It's called Rocky Restaurant. It's beautiful. They even bought out the, um, store right next to it and turned it into a private dining space. We now, um, have that in the village. And so I would encourage all of our residents to, to, uh, try out this new restaurant. It's, I think it's the only Greek restaurant that we have in town. And it's super modern, and so.
The food.
And the food is great. So I just wanted to make sure that that was, um, stated as well. I also wanted to thank our staff again for, uh, the really comprehensive budget that was put before us and the strategic plan. I know it's a lot of work. Um, and I'm, uh, grateful in, in addition to, um, uh, our village not raising property tax for the tenth year in a row. We're, we're, we're actively working to reduce property tax as well. And so really, really grateful for the efforts of our staff. And I also wanted to give a special thank you to our world-class Public Works Department led by TJ and John. The snow this past weekend was horrible. I mean, I've lived here all my life and every time it snows, I'm still shocked at how bad it gets. Um, and so, but our, our, the streets, the neighborhood streets, the, the main street, they, they were, they were just plowed so expeditiously. And, um, uh, there are communities that surround us that sometimes, you know, residents will get on to Facebook and say, oh, it's not, the streets are not being plowed. I don't know what's going on. And you can't ever say that in Hannover Park because they're, they're plowed so fast and so well. So, and it's, um, it, it takes so many people to get that done. And so I'm, I'm so just grateful for our really awesome Public Works Department. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Bracolino? Oh, you do? Yes.
No, she said, she said you got there.
Did you deliver? They were, they were permitting to Tesla.
Yeah.
And now you're gonna hear from all the salespeople. Thank you for your participation with the basket brigades. And thank you to the Lions Club for their participation. And, uh, it was wonderful. Trustee Albach?
Yes, Mayor. I, I'd just like to highlight, uh, one thing in a village trustee report this, this meeting. And that is, um, I was very impressed, uh, in the last few meetings where we were discussing the ordinance about ICE. I was impressed by the bravery of some of our residents coming in to speak on that point and supporting us as we went through that process and, and providing us additional illumination and wisdom. So I just want to celebrate the bravery of the residents of the Village of Hannover Park. That concludes my report.
I second that.
It was. Trustee Gutierrez.
Yes, thank you. Um, so I just want to thank the board, uh, for passing, uh, the ordinance that prohibits the use of, uh, our property for federal civil immigration enforcement. It highlights what we can do when we come together and discuss these things instead of just, um, having these decisions made for us. And so I, I also wanted to highlight our deputy manager, um, because I'm sure it wasn't just you, right? But you, you presented it really well. You gave us all the notes. You gave us option A, option B, and that's how things should be done. And so, uh, just thank you so much and to, to, I know Bernie was a part of that and staff, thank you so much for that. If this ordinance keeps at least one person from being abducted, if it keeps one person's due process rights from being violated, then we have done our job. So thank you so much. Um, as the only Latina out here, sometimes I can feel a little bit alone, but, um, not, not with this board. So just thank you from the bottom of my heart, and my family thanks you. Um, also, this Saturday, we're having a very exciting, oh my gosh, so wonderful archiving event with the historic committee. So if you have nothing better to do on Saturday at ten AM, we're here from ten to twelve. We're archiving our history. Please join us. Um, they're actually a lot of fun, and that's why we call them the hysterical committee. Um, no one should be without hats, coats, gloves. So if you know of somebody that needs, let us know. POC is ready to support in any way we can. I also wanted to let you know that the Community Resource Center, um, at fifteen fifteen Lake Street received this new, um, its new signage is up. It's the Ascension, has the Ascension sign, and then the Community Resource Center where POC is housed. We now have the POC Hopeful Beginnings, which serves, uh, new-time moms, first-time moms, and does postpartum, um, depression. All these services are for free. Adoption services, parenting issues, all of these things across, for anybody in Illinois that needs it, um, for free. And they also have a, a baby, uh, clothing closet, which is beautiful. Um, we also have Greater Family Health, which provides, um, uh, low-cost, uh, medical services. And WIC and CED is theirs. And then now Ascension Community Health is moving in. So, and hopefully we, so we'll have six nonprofits in this one building. So I think this is something that, that Hannover Park can be really proud of, of what, and I'm saying this not just because they're my employer, because I'm, they're very dedicated to, to this community as well. And I think John can, can even say more than I can on that. But just to give you a heads up, that, um, that, that is expanding, and POC has taken up more space there as well. So if you're ever in the area of fifteen fifteen Lake Street, uh, stop by. That's the end of my report.
And well done to you for bringing that whole initiative right there.
I had help from this mayor, I know.
Yeah, but it's, uh, makes, when you make a difference like that.
Thank you.
And, uh, with that, I want to mention we'll be going to executive session for personnel. And we'll conclude the meeting in the executive session.
So that is, uh, section two C one, appointment, employment, performance, compensation, and dismissal of specific employees.
Thank you. Please motion. So move.
Second.
Please motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now you have to take a roll call.
Oh, roll call. Okay, roll call.
Trustee Porter.
Yes.
Trustee Conko.
Yes.
Trustee Van Colley.
Yes.
Trustee Bracolino.
Yes.
Trustee Albach.
Yes.
And Trustee Gutierrez.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, a motion, uh, will be adjourning in executive session. We will not return. Thank you.
Where's my thing?
I'm sorry, who was first and second on that?
So.